One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we would have to bring in the citizens coming from away for when I come in. Before we go on, I want you to read a card, please.
I'll do that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, thank you. When the two passes were over, yes, they started down.
Mr. Dodd actually is the one who said it.
Mr. Dodd, thank you.
I'm supposed to say it, but I'm busy turning off my phone. Sorry.
It's a team, it's a team.
May I have a question to adopt the agenda?
I move it.
With the addition of the Motorola radio maintenance contract addendum, which we said we would bring to the board, I think at the last meeting, and that's what Wendy would come in so you can see all of that, have all of that. If you would like to wait for them before.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and move that we adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent with the addition of the Motorola addendum.
Okay, it's the move by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryan to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent with the addition of the addendum to the Motorola Motorola radio maintenance contract. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I pose case four zero, thank you. And now, I should get to read the card. And over the weekend, all of us here in the board attended visitation and service for Governor Romney's father-in-law, Aldo's father. And this is a card from Linda to all of the board members. begins, wow, we didn't know where to start, we don't know where to start. All the thoughts and prayers, the food, the beverages, supplies, the beautiful flowers, and the time it took for me busy weekend to be with us and share in our grief Saturday morning. Getting through this difficult time was easier because of your time and everything you did for us. Thank you seems so inadequate, but thanks, all we, this all we know to say. Thank you, everyone, all of both of them, Linda. This is thoughtful, this thoughtfulness will always be remembered on session of the board. So, a lovely ceremony, and we create a long with you, and also have joy with you and remember the good times. Next, we have school support services with Susan Snell.
Good morning, I am asking for you to approve the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the golden light.
I'll make a motion that we approve the instructional and support recommendations as shown in Golden Light, copy.
Second.
It's the move by Mr. Dodd, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the instructional and support recommendations presented to us in the Golden Light. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Case four zero, thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question this way.
Oh, sorry, sure.
So, I know that we have some resignations on here from instructional staff. You know, when we had talked a little bit about recruiting and recruiting process for new teachers, you mentioned to me that there were a number of open positions this year. So, where do we stand on this year and also going forward as we recruit for next year? What was the outlook in the board?
Okay, currently, we have twenty-eight instructional positions posted. We have twelve at the elementary. We have six at the middle school, six at the high school, and four at our other departments. We have currently fifteen teachers working towards cer-, or fifteen substitutes working towards certification so that they can be hired as full-time teachers. We, with our recruiting efforts, we will continue to recruit. Here are some recruiting efforts that we have done for this school year that we will continue for next year. We posted positions on teacher teacher. We did not receive any teachers, we did not hire any teachers from that, so we will no longer use teacher teacher. It was not beneficial for our money. We posted positions, we've got several positions posted, both in the state and out of state, on college and university websites, on their teaching websites. We attended community job fair at Central Florida, the College of Central Florida. We attended a job fair at Lucanto High School just to recruit our students possibly going into teaching or even for support positions. We attended the PER recruiting fair in Pennsylvania. We would like, we will bring that to the board again this year. We would like to recruit Pennsylvania. I believe we've hired six teachers from Pennsylvania that have stayed with us. So, that was actually the most, as you would say, bang for our buck, was recruiting in Pennsylvania. There are two opportunities to recruit this year, so we're going to look at both of them, both Pittsburgh and Philadelphia to recruit. So, we will write that before the board. We attended the job fair in Bethune-Cookman. We did not hire anyone from Bethune-Cookman. We attended the Great Four to Teach In. I want to say we hired maybe one or two from the Great Four to Teach In. We attend that every year, and we, that will be in March this year, correct, Mr. Mullins? So, that recruiting person, we will definitely go to that and hope to secure some teachers. We are going to move up staffing, we talked about that yesterday, move up our staffing timeline so that we know what positions we are going to have open at that time. We also ask for teachers that plan to retire at the end of the year to go ahead and submit their paperwork so we have a good picture of what positions are going to be open at that time so that we can recruit. And then, we had actually the Child Development Services of Citrus County closed, and Mr. Baumer and I went and recruited there. We did hire a few teachers and a few staff members from that recruiting fair. We just went on a Friday, they called and said, we have eighteen people that are going to need positions, so we went and recruited there as well. So, we will continue. If the board has any ideas, suggestions for recruiting, we are always open. We have gone to UF in the past, we have gone to FSU in the past. We will continue to look at those, North Florida. We will continue to look at every recruiting opportunity that we can intend. Now, we do have a team that is recruiting. We will relook at positions for that team. We have, we, on that team is a principal from, or an administrator from the elementary world, an administrator from the middle school world, and an administrator from the high school world, as well as Mr. Baumer and myself that go out and recruit, interview and recruit.
So, in some of the articles I've read about the teacher shortage, it is a trend that continues nationally. Are you in agreement with that?
That is correct.
Excuse me, let me address that. Last week, I was at our superintendent's meeting, and there was probably, out of sixty-seven superintendents, there was probably fifty-five of us there. And there was a senator from Hillsborough County, Bill Martin called him, and also been talking about the teacher shortage. Because I guess, Linda Worf, who was at a professional development conference last week, and one of the O E staff members said that we're not seeing a teacher shortage. So, they asked us about teacher shortage. Probably ninety-five percent of the superintendents, maybe ninety-nine percent of us raised our hands in favor of shift teachers, they were for the subs. One school district said, hey, I'm in Lake County, but one superintendent said, hey, this county fires them, we hire them. And then, Brett Schurgman commented that he has never had trouble getting elementary teachers. And this year, he's filling them in the fall contest. So, it's nationally, but you can really see that in Florida. I don't know how many teachers we have that are on alternative certification, but...
I believe we have thirty-four right now that are, and that's one of the highest we've ever had when we really looked at that. Ms. Baldwin and I have been watching that, and we have, this is probably the highest number we've had since I've been in HR.
And I spoke to two teachers who resigned a while back, and I asked them, why are you leaving us? And they were both on alternative certification. And they both said, we don't know what teaching is about, regardless of how important it is. So, some of those are leaving them, the ones that have not gone through the educational piece of the job, in the process.
We've been fortunate that some of our retired teachers have come back to help us during this time. And that's some of your long-term subs that you see, actually retired teachers that have come back to work and they're serving, continue to serve the kids in the district. And we've been very fortunate to have them.
And I know there are principals encouraging some of our aides to try to get their teaching certification because some of our great teachers came to the ranks and were able to help us.
One of the things when we have the recruiting events that take place, or even on our website, I'm wondering if maybe, you know, we talk to Chris Gangler or something about making a promotional video that either they play there, or also maybe we have on HR that talks about the district and why you want to work here, and the aspects that we are always talking about. We could probably do that, maybe there's a superintendent's message that's part of that, or chairman's message that, you know, does that. But, you know, we talk about it, includes, of course, the lifestyles that you're seeing happening, the fishing, the wildlife, but that would maybe add to the reasons to do that.
Which is something you got.
I think it's something we probably can easily do, and it may be the difference of, if it's just one, it would probably be worth it. The other thing connects to this, but I, a suggestion that I had a substitute. You know, we have some great substitutes that come through our system, often their parents that, you know, were very involved, and then they try to help out. Because both long-term substitutes and short-term substitutes, their suggestion was, the superintendent, a number of years back, gave a great benefit to staff of permitting them to use their paths to be able to access going to the games. It's just a small benefit to try and, you know, and I will tell you, it's very popular. And I appreciate you've tracked that over the years, and I know that to see where, you know, the effectiveness of that. What if we extend that to our substitutes? And, you know, instead, this is just a small benefit that could be. And it's not something to decide today. I've heard that out as a consideration. It's probably something that's pretty small that we could do, but it might be the difference. They're not, they don't, whether they're a short-term or a long-term substitute, there isn't a lot of financial benefit always, but this certainly could be a little improvement.
I mean, I would be in favor of that. I'd also be in favor of looking at our volunteers. I mean, I don't know how much money we lose at the gate from having volunteers being...
My promise, if I call off in high school, I'll tell you how much money. Because then, you know, it goes out, the next principal meeting, and I keep saying, we promote popcorn.
That's it, we buy more popcorn.
We can have that, so. Don't tell me she's very right, because the school system, we can keep action with the world, the business and corporate world, because these people are going into theirs, they're not going into us, and we don't have a way to compete. Something like that would add a little bit, not a lot, but add a little bit.
Just something that, you know, and the other thing is, and I know the superintendent was very poignant when she did this, it also helped to increase the attendance of our staff at those events. And it's done that. It does the same thing with our substitutes in our communities, I agree. I think it gets them more involved, and I can tell you, you know, as we all have probably seen, high school sports, middle school sports, which are obviously our big one. Attendance, I think, all the way around is down than what I think we all think of as the glory days when there was a lot more. Part of that's just because there's more things, you know, going on in the world. I'm not sure on Friday night why anybody wouldn't be at a high school football game, but...
The money, though, is very real, paying your entrance and your children's interest for parents coming in, so it's a lot of money. And people will like, no, I think I'll spend this in another way with those kids or food or whatever, but not for this. And they took that in free, that it would be on our side, our team, and very positive. You know, I think so, I think at least it's something to explore.
Thank you, Susan.
That's true. So, our recruitment plan, though, you had mentioned to me that you do use principals and assistant principals who go out with you, right?
That's correct.
And what I had brought up, and what we had talked a little bit about, was the local universities and colleges. And so, you feel comfortable with your plan as far as recruiting goes, with availability of a team to go out, if there wasn't a bed coming up at a Florida college or university, you could put together a team that would go and represent the county as a recruit?
Yes, absolutely.
And also, the teachers who are in the schools right now, particularly those who are newly graduated, maybe they could take on the job of contacting the people they went to school with and saying, you know, Citrus County is a pretty good place to teach, why don't you come on down and give us a visit? We've done that before, we have, people have, we have hired people who came in because they're afraid to talk math, but they were just middle school, visited and liked it. So, maybe that's a way, talking to the teachers themselves.
We can certainly do that, we can email our new teachers and ask them to do that, certainly.
And I like the idea about putting something on our webpage that shows where you're going to if you go to Citrus County, what kind of county it is. That's a big seller to know that you're not walking into people rioting in the streets and that sort of thing, it's a guarantee.
And that's what we share when we go, we do share that, that how safe our community is and what a great place it is to have children and to raise your family, yes. But we can look at that, absolutely, we can work on something. All right? Have a good day.
Now, we're going to, Mr. Bradshaw, return when you go down. Sherry?
Mr. Anderson, this came in a little bit ago, it's an amendment to the Communication Systems Agreement. You'll recall, you have a call, how long ago was we entered into?
July of 2015.
July of 2015, whereby it was the sheriff's office, the school system, the county, and some other organizations that buy the Motorola system for our countywide radio contracts. And we use it for the buses and for the school district and everything else. And I think this is the addendum, the amendment that goes to it, that that was the purchase of the actual equipment. This is a maintenance agreement for the total of two ninety-one eight sixty-three, and it outlines how it's going to be paid out over the next ten years. Is that right, Sherry?
That's correct.
Any questions, Sherry, on this? Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Dodd? How's the teaching?
Just in case. The financial impact to the county, to the district? It doesn't show it here on the front request. Is it on page one?
Yeah, two, that's going to be two ninety-one eight sixty-three, over the course of the next ten years, so.
And for this budget year, it's seventeen seven, is that correct?
And that's our, we've already put that into our budget, yes.
Okay, and that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure, right?
We anticipated these fees, but this is just the amendment that kind of formalized it.
I'll leave with the budget, I'm sorry.
Now, is this something that we could have time review and put on our next month's meeting?
I think this is the one that, a long time ago, we said that we knew this was coming, and just a few minutes ago, we adopted it as part of the original.
And the board of county commissioners.
We didn't have to move the table until the next meeting, that's how you proceed or move it.
Could we recess the meeting, have the workshop, allow Mr. Dodd some time just to review this, and then we just open it up at the end of the workshop to vote on, would that work? If that, I mean, if that would at least allow...
As long as you don't close out the...
That's what I was just going to say, if we recessed that, I don't know, Mr. Dodd, if that would work.
That would be good, Mr. Dodd, there is a county committee...
Because I would, I would like to, just, I mean, I think, I know we've budgeted for it, but I'd probably just like to have a chance to go through it, and that would just allow us that time in between our breaks to review that.
And this agreement goes until twenty-five, twenty-six? I mean, we're making this commitment through that year, effectively.
We pay a maintenance fee anyway, and this is just telling us, outlining what the maintenance fee is going to be. We've paid a maintenance fee the past eight or ten years, as long as we've had radios.
Right.
This is just outlining a ten-year plan.
I agree with Mr. Kennedy, I'd be willing to have a little chance to review it, go on with the workshop, and look at this, because we just received it, and I just imagine it's...
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Kennedy, your suggestion was?
To recess the meeting, once we get done here, recess rather than, then close out the meeting, and then after the workshop, before we finish our day's business, we just, you can open it back up.
Oh, okay.
We can vote on it then, and if there's any questions and discussion, then we can have that, and then we can go.
Okay.
And that would just give us time to, especially as slow readers, and I mean me, not forgotten.
Any other messages, Mr. Mullins? Mr. Kennedy?
I just have a couple of good housekeeping stuff to share, and it's probably just easier to do it now. I was contacted by the Martin Luther King Committee Parade Committee out of Crystal River. They're going to be contacting all the board members, as well as the superintendent, because they were hopeful that on January sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, that we all might be interested in participating in the parade in Crystal River for that. And so, I certainly said I was more than interested. It seems like I've always had a swim meet on that weekend that's taken me away, but... So, I wanted to just make sure, you know, put that out to you, and if you want to put it in your calendar. And just because there may not be a, or the place to do this later, I wanted to thank, excuse me, Sherry, Mr. Baumer, and Mr. Bishop for going out to the schools on our health insurance and talking to our staff and helping to answer questions that they have. I know I've gotten questions given to me, and I talked to Mr. Bishop, but they're looking to maybe put some frequently asked questions, you know, sheet together so that they can share that around so that we have that. But I know it's been a tough conversation. What I appreciated in Mr. Bishop, when he came on board, expanded that committee so that we have even more transparency of having representation on that insurance committee to, I think, I think it's every school.
Every cost center.
Every cost center, even better. So, that's been a positive thing. It's not necessarily we're thrilled with healthcare costs always increasing. But, one of the things is, we don't necessarily desire to be in the health insurance business as a school district, but it's something we have to do. And we do that as a benefit to our staff and employees, and we're trying to manage that in the most cost-effective way that also provides the best benefits. And it's a challenge, it is an absolute challenge, but I appreciate what staff's doing and communicating, and I really just wanted to share that out, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Dodd?
A lot of great things going on with Save Our Waters Week, and I was able to go to the Save Our Waters Week Jeopardy program at Central Florida College, they did a great job, and Estuary's Day, all these things. We really do get to see our schools that work there, educating kids about those environmental issues, and so I'm really pleased with that. I will be at the Emerging Workforce Study, I don't know if any of you signed up to go to that on tomorrow, the Perp Works Office is doing an Emerging Workforce Program. And so, I'm going to be going there, I know Miss Bishop, I talked to the superintendent, she said that Miss Bishop was going to go also for UTEC College. So, and also, homecoming, Lucanto and Citrus have homecoming weeks this week, so a lot of things going on in these schools. What's that? Oh, that's right. You guys are going to be the parade marshals, so, that's good, that's good. That's fine.
Linda, as in your twin Linda.
Yes. I love that.
Not you.
I know that. I'm going to march in front of them.
Don't joke, she'll be the one going with this.
Yes, I don't want to be, but I think that's a little...
We're going.
We'll be right across soon. Oh, gosh, and I be hurt by somebody, by some ex-firm. Ms. Bryan?
I've been busy at S A C meetings on SASSA, PREST, and LPS. And what I've done, what I tried to do, was explain that this is not a good year for insurance, and that the previous years have been good years. We've been three percent, two percent, five percent, and this year is just not a good year. So, I got the message out, at least to those three schools.
And now, I'm sure I forgot, tomorrow is Bring Your Father to School Day. And I really appreciate, you know, it's something the governor started about a year ago. I'm going to be meeting with my goddaughter and going in, because it's an elementary, so... My middle school daughter unfortunately sees me too much at school, and did not, was not interested in bringing her dad to school today.
I have to go to school.
It does, it does.
She always can.
Exactly, I'm sure they would too. So, it's a great day, and I'm grateful that the district is doing that. And the district has had a very appropriate, open mind when it comes to that. It is Bring Your Dad to School Day, like your dad could be anyone that has that role. So, I just thought about that, and you wanted to remind us.
And I was at, it was middle school yesterday, the SAC meeting, and that was brought up, and they had really had high numbers. In middle school? Yes. People, dads, so different, I just wanted to come to school to have lunch with their parent, with their kids, and then to visit, and that was surprising to me, because I taught middle school.
You had a grandmother last year, and she was the adult in that child's life. She was dad, she said that's the role I play in out there, and school is very honoring of that.
Oh, that's absolutely great. And I'll begin by, you finish, you're better. Begin by saying, I visited SAC meeting, and it was middle school yesterday, Ms. Wilson's there, Ms. Mike was there, and they presented information, financial information. I was just there to introduce myself, because I was following you, you were the person last year. And I did tell them that I was going to be looking at this, so I had to do curriculum in terms of English, because I want to revisit it in a few years, since I, since I taught it, but since I was a mentor with the kids, and so I wanted to sort of refresh my mind. And what I'm looking at is the continuum of English particularly, and other things from the elementary, middle, and high school, because that's what it has to be. It can't be a drop-off point, a bus reaching the station at elementary school. And so, it all has to link together, so I wanted to take it and renew my own thoughts about that. So, it was a nice meeting of all of the dads at lunch, and dads visiting dads, and I have that. What I want to bring up is the Veterans Day Parade, which is November the eleventh, and we always take part in the parade. I want to see if you could put that on your schedule again and take part in that instead of the parade. And it is jot it down in notebook for possibility of doing it, or usually we do it every year, so. We should have a float.
I thought that's what buses are.
Look at that look, look at that look.
The buses are...
She wants the bus.
And we'll have the nice, nice bus with the banner?
Bus float.
And we're going to have kids, P G E usually supplies with kids.
They do, they do.
And I think I hand out books and do something.
Yeah. Inside, yeah, I want it, right?
Yeah.
Is it? They're good. Okay. It's French, I'm going to make it up. We're going to recess a special reading by the Citrus County School Board, and then we're going to go into the workshop. But first, I'd like to ask anyone to have a five-minute break before we get into the workshop. Are you ready? Okay, let's go ahead, then, to the workshop, and the first topic will be Zika virus.
See, she brought in the big guns in the back there.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. This morning, I'm going to share some information with you about the Zika virus, and I'm also going to share information to you on steps that the district has taken to bring awareness of the prevention of Zika virus and the mosquito bites as well. With me today, I have several people in the audience who are here to either answer questions for you or to possibly share some information with you. If you can give me just a moment, I'd like to introduce them. I have three people from the Florida Department of Health, Citrus County. I have Tito Rubio, who is the Health Officer, they're welcome. Patrick Boyd, who is the Emergency Management and Public Information Dentist. Patrick. And Janora Wade, who is the Director of Nursing. Pam Carnavale, who of course, you know her, is our Student Health Specialist, and she works extremely closely with the Health Department, and she has their cell phone numbers and is in constant connection with us, mainly Janora. And these fine folks have always been available for myself as well. We also have two people from the Mosquito Control Board. We have George Deskins, and we have Leon McClellan. Also in our audience is John Colasanti, the Coordinator of Maintenance, who might want to share some information or answer questions for us. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd, did you have a question?
No, I do have a question, but I was going to point out that Mr. McClellan is an elected official, and so I'm glad... official and so I'm glad that he could be on the meeting today on behalf of the mosquito control board.
All right. Let me just get this rolling. Feel free to comment on my picture. I'm pretty proud of it.
You took it yourself.
Hopefully it's the closest that you will get to that. What is Zika virus? According to the CDC, which is the Center for Disease Control, Zika is a virus that is usually contracted through the bite of an infected 80s species mosquito. Zika can also be spread through sexual contact with an infected partner or from an infected woman to her fetus. The Zika virus is not passed directly from person to person through casual contact. That's a fact that we want to make sure that everybody is aware of. And Pam Carnavale worked very closely with me to put this slide together, but if I have misinformation or I might have a word out of place, I don't hesitate feedback from the experts over here. What are some of the symptoms for the Zika virus? Most common symptoms of the virus are fever, rash, joint pain, conjunctivitis, known as eyes that are pink or pink eyes. For most children and adults, the Zika virus infection will not cause symptoms or will only cause very mild symptoms. Another symptom, very important to be aware of, is that the Zika virus infection during pregnancy may be associated with adverse pregnancy outcomes and certain birth defects. What are some ways to prevent the Zika virus infection? Eliminating or controlling mosquito breeding sites such as anything containing sanding water, wheelbarrows, old tires, tire swings. The best way to prevent Zika virus infection is to prevent mosquito bites. And ways to do that is to wear short or long sleeves, long pants, capri pants, staying in air conditioning or buildings that have screens, and using Environmental Protection Agency-registered insect repellent. Just to raise up again what I shared, the best way to prevent the Zika virus is to prevent all mosquito bites. And those of you that have been bitten by a mosquito bite and have that raised area and that scratchiness that sometimes we scratch till we bleed, I'm all for how to prevent mosquito bites. Steps the district has taken to bring awareness and prevention of the spread of Zika virus. We have posted information on the district webpage and you can find that information, I'll just show you so the audience can see it as well, by clicking on our website, going to the parent tab. And it is the first piece of information under the parent tab. There are three pieces of information there. I'm sure everybody has seen what is on there, but I will bring it to the audience's awareness webpage again, yes. I'm just wanting to go to different areas. I want to show you our webpage. I'm proud I have it. I'm so glad I'm not the technology specialist. There we go. All right. You can see Zika virus center, talking to children about Zika and mosquito bite prevention. All this information comes through us either through the Health Department or gets it from the CDC webpage. So all our information is very relevant and most appropriate and up to date. Other things we've done in our district, Mrs. Himmel has shared information with students and parents through the school messenger system on the district's efforts to bring awareness to the Zika virus. We provided awareness and prevention methods of the virus to all school board employees through emails. We started emails back in February when we were first made of this, made aware of the Zika virus. School nurses have shared information to students and staff about the virus and prevention of mosquito bites through the morning shows at the schools. Teacher lesson plans that align to the science curriculum were shared with administrators. And we've collaborated with the county mosquito board, thank you very much, to implement mosquito control measures. And if the board would like, Mr. Colasanti and more members from the mosquito board control can share some information or you all can ask specific questions about that. At this time, the Florida Department of Health, Citrus County, is in frequent contact with our department and provides us with updates as they get them or as needed. And we will continue to monitor and share information as it becomes available to us. It is very brief, but I feel it was very to the point. We shared information about the virus, some symptoms, what to look for, what our district is doing to keep community members, families, and students and staff aware of it and where we are at this present time.
Is an ill person more at risk or does it affect everyone's health?
I'll defer to Pam for that one. She's consulting. Thank you.
Your previous illnesses, we really shouldn't have any faculty that do that.
If you have a cold today and it doesn't...
It's not an infected mosquito, so that, that can disturb you whether you're ill or not. It appears so.
Do we confirm cases of Zika there in west central Florida? Or roughly?
We've had two cases of travel related. We've got two cases of travel related Zika virus in the county. They had been reported by the Department of Health. That's come out. Currently we have no active because those, they've been over two months, over two months ago. The cycle of this is a 14-day cycle, so it's not like 24 days. 24-day cycle, my apologies. So we look at within 45 days, we have no transmission 45 days, which is where you saw down the south line. Where they declared one of the zones now is Zika-free because they went 45 days without a cycle of them. So in Citrus County, again, we had two travel-related cases that have been over two months. We've had no travel related cases reporting symptoms. We're doing a real good job. I want to take my hat off again to mosquito control. They do a wonderful job in Citrus County. They're very hot.
That is so true. I was out at Mr. McClellan's Gary one time and I thought, well, oh, I know, I'm going to get eaten up by a mosquito. And I usually don't. You see, I'm the last person in a room with a single bite because they don't like my blood or something. But I thought out there, not a single bite. So I was going to ask you this and I saw you and I thought, how do you do it? The mosquitoes are providing you.
We don't really have mosquitoes out there. Our population out there has always been very young. I guess because of the sand that they're sowing, but I appreciate that.
Really? And you're on the board, so if you do, you know what you did right.
I have a good call.
Thank you.
And I've had the call before, but for the most part it's very normal.
So when we talk about our schools and our children, we talk about the standing water that's around. And I know, Ms. Ali, you had mentioned that there was a good coordinated effort with mosquito control and with spraying. Could you just explain that to the board just briefly and talk about, you know, are we having a lot of mosquitoes around the schools or what situation we're at there?
I think I'd like to defer to the experts. Mr. Deskins and Mr. Colasanti have worked very closely together.
By the way, as they're coming up, if you see Mr. Colasanti with a larger smile on his face these days, it's because the Red Sox made the...
Yeah. Zika is new to the United States. The vectors that spread the disease are not, it's the same vector that's spreading up in the city. Citrus County mosquito control has been monitoring these mosquitoes, stepping up our efforts and methods, testing our techniques since 2009. So just because the disease is new, it doesn't mean our tactics are untried, tried through. We've improved them over the years. This year, because of Zika, we've made special contact with board down into the schools. Before school started, we all called up, talked to the walk-around maintenance or janitors, showed them what we look for, what we're looking for, the habitats of these diseases there. I'm not sure if you guys know, there's over 84 different species of mosquitoes in the state of Florida. Only two of these species are definitely the prominent vectors at this time. These ones have very specific habitats. They're in green containers, mostly man-made containers right by the schools. They'll use stuff as catch bases and so that was a big thing that we were looking for from these schools, catch bases and gutters and downstalls. So we pointed out to maintenance and janitors what we look for and showed them what larvae look like in the water so that if they notice it in the times that we're not there, they can give us a call, we'll come right back. And a lot of the catch bases and stuff, we use product called Natural Art, XRTs. It's a 180-day bracket. Now, a lot of the products we're using for larva cycle control, gelbop or live line, our natural bacteria is very safe. Actually, these chemicals, different formulations of, are allowed to use in public. So the chemical will be very safe and not putting anything harmful around the kids. In order to control the adults that hatch off from elsewhere, from the neighboring communities and stuff, we do follow the schools normally around large events, homecoming, they definitely invite one in any home games. Well, we're in control of the adults that come from elsewhere.
We were very thankful that they offered to come up before school started to stand site and use any ideas that might convert to us of the rest of those, those areas that might be there. But mosquito control has worked for us for many years. I mean, I remember when we first started that agreement between us and they'd come out and they research and they scan for any events that hit the schedules from the schools. So knowing the events are outside and then they treat, meet. So that very helps with the school, that's what we're all these days. We also contacted the schools this year in particular to bring to our attention any areas that they have questions with because we always have ongoing drainage concerns that we need to go with. But of course, one thing to keep in mind is we have retention areas that are designed to hold the water and that's where the concern comes in. That's what mosquito control helps us so much because they keep them out of that, they treat each.
You sit down. You.
No, I'm good.
You're good.
No, I'm good. Most of the schools are regular sites where we keep them out on a regular basis. We can monitor them regularly. Another thing that we do is, I don't know, like Division PREST just did a presentation at PREST, we offer to do presentations at any school to educate the students on how to protect themselves after.
Is there a suggestion, how, how about the students want to do tricks now? Should they spray the insect repellent or no?
We recommend the five Bs. Insect repellent is definitely one. Deep is what is recommended, what is recommended, follow the label on it. It does have an H in it on the spray itself, so breathe the label, follow it. Dress is a big one. These mosquitoes prefer to feed around the ankles, so long pants are a definite benefit to death control as well as on mosquitoes. The one of the Bs that doesn't apply is dawn and dusk. These mosquitoes are daytime feeders. Most of the time we tell people to avoid dawn and dusk, when mosquitoes might attack them. It doesn't apply to these guys. They prefer to feed daylight hours. The biggest thing is drink. Make sure you don't have any sand in water. If you've got a dog water bowl that passes that water all the time, flush it out every three days, scrub the sides that are muddy eggs, and fill it back up. Educate yourself. Make sure you know what a mosquito bite looks like in the water. They're pretty easy to recognize, they're a little bit, like you see in a higher, the dog water bowl that's sat in the water. Just make sure you don't have the contenders that are out there. There's nobody that can see it or breathe.
Well, yeah, well, the information, I never knew all of this. It's really great that you shared the service.
That was a short version.
Thank you very much.
I just asked Mr. Rachel, they probably aren't excited about this, but I asked Wes when he was little, please chase the father's shit. And I said, what's it due to do that, do that too, right? That is weird.
Did we ever catch him? Didn't want to catch him. No, you run him through the trough.
And now you never get mosquito bites again.
Okay.
I don't know.
We have the antipox.
No, I just appreciate the information, appreciate the cooperative effort with mosquito control and Health Department and the school district. I mean, this is important, trying to protect our children, right? So I appreciate the information.
I want to thank again the time and the people that come and present. They know how important this is and they wanted to share with you as well our cooperative efforts and partnerships. So thank you and thank you all.
We really do appreciate the Health Department working with Ms. Pam and not just on this issue, but all the issues that involve in our students. And I know there's been a continuing, I think, because all of you have been in your roles, it's just strengthened that relationship and we are very grateful.
You're right, it's stronger and stronger. I'm totally impressed with y'all and how you work with the species. And I'm sure that people, new people to the county who are not aware of Florida and the mosquitoes and stuff.
I haven't.
I really don't. And the mosquitoes, I'm a mosquito. Well, those of us who've been here a long time, we know there's a problem, we know so it's great that you're able to pay me every time.
I was just grateful Mr. God didn't make any muller jokes about taking him more over its Crystal River.
He is round.
Guys, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a policy review.
Today we have four policies for review. One is pursuant to some new requirements from the state. The other three, the number two, three, and four, that you're going to be considering, your alt-implement House Bill 7029, which is that 160-page bill that dealt with school choice and many parts of it. So I'll kind of give you an overview of that when we get to those three. The first one is a request to review the revision of Policy 2.80, reporting child abuse. This adds Section 3 and revised Section 4E to include requirements for the reporting of child abuse. Notice DOE has published sample notices for reporting child abuse and misconduct on the DOE website and correct citation 39.202. This matter was discussed by the Policy Informants Committee in July. And be glad to answer any questions if you can.
Chuck, I have a general kind of question. I just thought, because I was the member of the middle school yesterday, and guidance, we used to always review the policies continually if something came out from the state to say this is guidance review. So I'm wondering, when we pass this policy committee, when the board passes it, the people in the school system, how do they know that something new has come?
We actually email a notice and we post it on the community bulletin board for a few weeks so that they're aware when there's new policies that have been adopted.
But it's emailed directly to all people?
The staff, yes.
Okay.
So the big thing here is that we're going to put these notices around in English and Spanish that they're going to be posted by our employees, make sure they don't, make sure they know the process. It's in our policy, but we want to have notices around.
Yes. The notices will be part of the policy.
Mr. Dixon, and I don't know if this is a question from you or maybe either Mr. West or Mr. Muller, but it appears from the way I'm reading this language, and maybe this has been the case, but that it puts the requirement of notice on the individual who has received the information as opposed to, you know, a teacher, let's say, hears it and reports it to the assistant principal. I'm assuming the assistant principal is the one who's not supposed to make that report. It would be in this case, the teacher that makes that report in that example.
What it is, is that reporting it to the assistant principal doesn't relieve you of the obligation to make that phone call.
That's what I mean.
Although they do not have to go report it to the assistant principal or to the SRI or anybody else, what we try to advise is that you go to the assistant principal and make the call while the assistant principal...
and make the call while the assistant principal is there, so that we know that one of those phone calls has been made. But they did, they changed that to be specific, that is, you know, if you find out about it, it's your responsibility to make the call, because I think people would go report it, and then it gets lost in the shuffle, and then, you know, so it's basically, if you find out about it, it's your obligation to make the phone call.
You did, I'm sorry, but I missed.
What happens if the teacher tells the administrator, now they're both on the hook for making that call, that's why they usually make it together, because it goes to.
And there is, you mentioned something, and I guess that concerned me just a second, that the, in this case, let's say, the teacher hears of something, they could report it to the state, are you saying they don't, they aren't under obligation, their policy, or under state law to report it to the principal then?
Their obligation is to make the child abuse phone call.
Okay.
Because the actual making of the phone call is confidential, so.
That was what, as I was saying about.
You can't be compelled to testify that you're the one who actually made, actually made the phone call.
But there's another obligation, if it's about a staff member, then they're obligated to report educator misconduct as well, to their supervisors.
Well, that was why, that's where I wondered if that fell under statute for that of, not necessarily under this statute, but it fell under an obligation of.
If it's an educator misconduct, sometimes the child abuse is an issue from home.
Right.
If a teacher finds out another teacher committed the abuse, then they have obligation to make the child abuse phone call and report it because of the, because of our policy, and also because of the principles of professional conduct.
That was what I was thinking, I wondered if there were some overlapping, yes.
So, one of the clarifications is that if elementary school teacher notices a sign, a mark, or bruise on the child, and it may typically go to the guidance counselor or assistant principal, say, hey, I noticed this on the child, and for them to look into that further, are we saying now that the teacher's going to have to make that call? If they notice a mark or bruise?
The teacher needs to, and if it reported to the guidance counselor, then we ask them both, that would be, not separate calls, but be there and.
They will make that call together with the guidance counselor, the administrator, they'll make that call.
And we're very clear to staff, we're not investigating, you know, so, and I know Mr. Mullen, he's a lot of staff, and he tells them, you are the reporter.
We're mandatory reporters, not investigators.
Right. I'm just thinking of, you know, past cases when somebody said, hey, this is, you know, we've seen this, and, you know, guidance counselors would get involved and make the call to report.
That's way to be done.
Right. And so now we're saying that the teacher, with the guidance counselor, or just the teacher?
Or just the teacher. Do you have a child that comes to the class and has a black eye, or whatever, you know, and you don't have a reason to believe that there's child abuse, and we can say, you know, you need to go ahead and report it. There's no downside for us reporting it, there's a downside for not reporting it. So, you know, if the teacher chooses at that point in time, just alcohol, you call it in, do whatever, is under no obligation to go and to tell anybody else, because of the confidentiality of making that report. But most of the time they go to, we ask them, you know, although that's your right, please go tell an AP, or the principal, or guidance counselor about what's going on, because, you know, we have those things, you know, if we know that something like this is occurring in other services and things, then we can provide, but then it also becomes both of the responsibility to make sure that the alcohol is taken care of.
A lot of that changed after the incident at Penn State, you know, and there was a lot of accusations about why I told him, and I thought he was telling her, and they were telling him. So, a lot of the laws clarified that, and said, you know what, if you know about it, you're responsible to report it.
Well, what Mr. Bradshaw said makes a very positive sense, that the teacher might be reporting it, but then that information really should be shared with the assistant principal.
Yeah, we encourage them to do that.
As a best practice, it just seems like it would be in the educator's best interest to handle that.
I see.
The next three items all relate to the provisions of House Bill 7029, and currently we have a Controlled Open Enrollment Plan. It's a document that just kind of lays out the process for requesting an out-of-zone transfer. But now we're going to be required to adopt that plan every year, beginning next year, and include some of the provisions within the House Bill. So I'll just go through these policies. You'll see the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, when I bring you the end-of-year report, I always bring it around March or April, so I'll just include that as part of that document, because that kind of lays out how you're going to zone, and whether or not you're going to move forward with any capital projects, add capacity, so this will be another factor in that decision, so I just included it with that document, and you'll see, I'm working on that now. But the first request is to revise policy 5.20 regarding student assignment. This will include the language that says the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan will be adopted by the school board, and then it also includes some additional language that's required because of out-of-county students requesting to come into the county. Just so I can kind of give you an overview of the difference between the process we follow now, and the process that we're going to have to follow based on the changes to the pursuant to House Bill 7029. Now we consider out-of-zone requests every year, they're reconsidered every year, so it's not something that carries over from year to year. Next year, if they're already approved, we're not going to consider a new request for that student. That student will be able to remain in that school until they finish the highest grade level there. So what we'll ask from them is, when we send out our letter in January, instead of saying, please apply for a new request, we'll say, please let us know if you don't plan to stay, so we can identify students who are not planning on staying at their out-of-zone school the coming year, and plan accordingly. But it'll cut down on the number of requests that we make. I don't know if it's going to create more out-of-zones or less out-of-zones. Currently, we have about 10% or around 1,472 as of today, out-of-zone students, which is fairly low for our district. We have, a lot of districts that have like 40%, you know, we have like 10%, so it's not a huge number, but it is something that's hard to plan for each year, because there's really no way to know how many you're going to receive until you receive all of them. Next year it should be easier, because if we have some that aren't coming back, they'll notify us, and we'll just assume they're going to go to their zone school, so we can plan that way. But the other changes, you know, I'll explain here in a minute when we get into the policy, the new policy on Controlled Open Enrollment, but are there any questions or concerns about 5.20?
I couldn't see that this is addressed in 5.20 or 5.23, and maybe I'm just missing it. I know later on we talk about capacity, and list of schools, and I'm assuming we're going to have to adopt a list on an annual basis of whether it's reached capacity, or determined if it's reached capacity, but I didn't see where that's defined. Is it defined in statute and not in policy?
What we, it's in our guidelines, basically, how we will handle that, but it's, we will set a capacity for each school. I went to a series of meetings with the other central Florida school districts on this very issue, and we all reached kind of a consensus that it would be 90%. And then once you get past 90%, you have a little bit of flexibility there to account for people moving in during the school year. It doesn't mean you can't approve more students than 90%, but it just means that you won't automatically approve them after you go over 90%. And that's why, another reason why I started sending you that weekly report, because we've been doing that for several years. That report will become the basis for those decisions, it's likely, it's color-coded, so that the schools are red, they basically have reached capacity. If they're yellow, they've not reached school capacity, but they may have reached grade level capacity, and if they're green, they haven't reached capacity, so there aren't any green schools right now, so.
But that's, to me, part of the concern of defining, whether that be policy or guidelines, is capacity isn't a number for the school. I mean, in a lot of cases, it's a grade level for us, but certainly, at least at elementary and middle, little less so, I know at high school, because there's more flexibility between the grades of classes, but, you know, we may have capacity in the school for desk space, in theory, but we're at, we're over, you know, we're 95% at third grade, but we're 80% maybe capacity at fourth grade, so it would seem that.
That's why we manage that at the school level, we manage the, at the district level, we manage school capacity, at the school level, we manage grade level capacity. So it gives the principal the ability to look at that on a case-by-case basis, and see, you know, based on the progression of students each year, whether they can accommodate that student at that particular grade level, and it's not really something you can manage well at the district level.
And that makes sense, I mean, that makes perfect sense in operational. Unfortunately, the legislature has taken somewhat of that power away from us locally, and have required us to just take them all unless, basically, we've set up parameters. So I'm wondering, should we be setting up some parameters to protect, so that that process that we're currently using, we're able to continue?
I think that's what Mr. Bradshaw was talking about, in other school districts, like what you said, you're going about a 90% capacity rate, because you still have to fall back on current parental treatment for, you know, students moving from one school district to the other because of divorce, you know, or custody, or, you know, military, you know, move with a serious illness, so you still got to make a combination for them, and that's why you're setting the capacity at 90. I understand what you're saying, though, what I think you're saying, Mr. Kennedy, is that, you know, although we may say we're going to start, you know, up to 90%, you know, we're going to cut it off there, but maybe probably in the plan, we can address the issue of, you know, that at least the principals at certain schools per grade level, they can determine the capacity for that particular grade.
And what I'm thinking is, is what's, I suspect, can happen, and it may not be the first year, and we all know legislators seem to be looking at this, and this could all be different a year from now. But my concern is, is that, as we know, this is, you know, a lot of what's driving this is this free agency for high schools. And my concern is that somebody wants to push an issue apparent of being at a particular school, that, you know, do we find ourselves in a lawsuit, or in some type of situation, if we don't have something that defines us, that we know, listen, we are at capacity at that school. We can accommodate you at this school, or this school, but we can't accommodate you here. Well, what they really want is to be on that team at that place.
We had that conversation with Mr. Kennedy last week, and it was superintendent, in his district, it's going to determine that 20% growth of their school membership, and so that's going to be included in his, what he will consider as capacity. As he said, with the influx of people coming in out of this county, he's not going to ignore that group of people, and he will, and that is part of his plan, policy. DOE is very clear, they will not determine any school district on what the capacity is, except for the guidelines that they give us for plans. And all they kept saying is, be fair, and it's just, you don't determine what we.
So that district, if that school's at 80% capacity, they're not going to allow an athletic transfer, because they're allowed for 20% worth, so they set the 80% bar?
The challenge, I still say for us, though, is, it's not just on a school basis, it really is that classroom situation. I know Mr. Mullen, with the principals, and when he's sitting down and saying, I got one more kid I can put at Central Ridge in third grade, and after that, I'm going to have to create another classroom. And, you know, so we're, you know, that, those are those challenges I think we're going to have, and it may be that we're just going to have to move forward as the policy is now, but it may be something that we are going to have to just continue to monitor and readjust.
Just to give you an example, one of the things that's in here that doesn't make any sense in this legislation, it says you'll take students from out of county if you have capacity, but then it says that you won't allow a student from out of county to displace an in-county student. So you could take students from out of county, and then you could have a situation when they move up to the next grade level, where you don't have room for in-county students. So there are all kinds of things like that that you're going to have to work through, and I think there is going to have to be some legislative tweaks. We tried to look at the whole thing, though, and come up with the most workable solution.
And Mr. Dixon, I know your department's been the one, that you've overseen this now for the last number of years, and I appreciate the superintendents made this a priority. This board, I think, has, we've largely tried to accommodate parents' requests within a reasonable, you know, parameters, and so really, we, you know, while we haven't called it open enrollment, we've certainly tried to provide accommodations and flexibility, and it's, I think we've largely been successful as a result of that. So I know a lot of what we're talking about isn't really a massive change for us, except probably athletics. Athletics is probably the number one thing, and it's, I still think it's going to be the number one challenge that we are faced with. Elementary, they want to go to one or the other, that's really not been a big deal. Middle really hasn't been, I think, a huge deal, but it's going to be the high school athletics that's the big thing, and we may just not know until we, as we get through this, to see what happens. This may be much to do about nothing.
The question I have was, you say in A, the provision of the open enrollment plan adopted by the school board, so there is an open enrollment plan that's already been adopted?
No, currently, it's not adopted. I just do it every year, but right now, it's not really a binding document, it's just that it lists out the process that you follow, but next year, there will, it will be adopted, it has a whole lot of new information in it.
Because I don't remember seeing an open enrollment plan, since I've been on the board, but you have, you have a plan.
I have one that's adopted, that's, that I'm working on for you to adopt in the first year.
So, and then in number, Roman numer, number two, it's called the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, is that different than the Open Enrollment Plan, or are these the same things?
It's the same.
So maybe we should put, maybe we should refer them as the same, right, maybe call them both, what, Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, or, okay, so that would be in A. Just wanted to make sure, because I, what I met with staff on this, we had discussed some of these things, and I just wanted to make sure I was clear on your.
That's correct. Talking about the same document.
Do you have a priority, you talked about athletics, but if we have a parent whose child was, I think he detained a higher-level man, let's say, and he was offered one high school, not the others, and a parent whose child played football at the school, but there, is there a priority?
Yes, let me, there's a list of priorities that are in the statute, that Mr. Bradshaw alluded to earlier, and then there are also school board-approved priorities that you have approved in the past, and what I've tried to do is to mesh those together, so that the priorities that are in the statute would be the personal priorities, and then the ones like students of staff members would be lower-level priorities. But in reality, there are always health, safety, and welfare priorities that come first, that if we have a situation where a child needs to be moved for a reason, and we, you know, even if we're at capacity, we do that, we don't, you know, that's just common sense, really, and there are provisions for that in the guidelines.
And I'm going back to it for a second for clarification, Mr. Dodd's point, the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan is going to be a guideline, is that correct? Or will we be, and I guess my question is, maybe, should we approach that as we would a guideline?
Yeah, but I think it's going to be a document.
So that, so that being the case, typically the process is, guidelines don't have to get approved by the board, they are typically just submitted to us for review, which I don't have a problem with that, except I would like to.
I think the board will approve.
And that was what I was going to ask my question.
Let me go over what's in it, because I have a graph here.
But it doesn't have to go through the policy process, as far as the 90 days and the thing, because it's a guideline, it can be just simply approved?
Well, no, it's not going to be a guideline, it's if you're going to approve it.
It's going to be a policy.
It's like a plan.
But it's, I mean, here's what, as we get closer to that time, Mr. Kennedy, I'll take a look at exactly what the proper procedure is, I think it needs to be a board-approved, so it has, you know, that this is what we're going to do, because that's the challenge that's going to come for people, saying.
because that's the challenge that's going to come for people, saying that, you know, you didn't approve 90% or however you did it, and that's where our challenges will come, so I think...
And I, and I would prefer that. I just wasn't sure if staff needed flexibility because particularly this first year. And that's what I was trying to, to, you know, to accomplish both as far as to give them that so that, you know, as we're working through it, but I wanted the board to know.
The Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, and that plan's probably that we need the board approved each year. Probably based on the changing factors over time that happens.
It's likely when you approve your zoning or your...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. But that's what I was thinking. That doesn't require the statutoryal things that we just, it goes on the agenda when we approve it. And that deals with...
The policy, the policy requires the plan. So the policy's what we're talking about today with 5.20. The plan itself will be approved separately each year, so it will be updated every year. And I'll give you an idea of what's in it here. It's got the eligibility requirements, who's eligible, the application process, how they did the application, where it goes, how long it takes to review, that kind of thing. Kind of nuts and bolts. The time period for accepting applications. So you have a required 45-day period, but we do it all year long. So we're going to do it at least 45 years, but we'll continue to do it as we have, always done it. Once we have a problem, then I'll come back to you and let you know that we have a problem, but I don't foresee one. The method of determining capacity of schools, which Mr. Mullen and I both talked about earlier, where we, we look at it at the school level and we look at it at the class grade level. And the capacity termination for each district school, identification of schools that have reached capacity, we're going to color-code those in weekly report. Class size standards, those are straight out of the DOE requirements. Lottery procedure, this is a new thing that's required. But basically, all it is, is if you have more applicants than you have space, then you have to have a way to select students using, you know, a chance process. So we've got that in there. Provision for a parent to request placement of siblings, we currently have that. Appeals process, we currently have that. And the availability of transportation, we allow transportation for special programs. And then we also allow transportation based on bus capacity to the nearest bus stop. Method and timeline for notifying parents, out-of-county students, how we handle that. Required preference criteria, which is straight out of the statutes, and contact information. So it's just a, it's a one place where a parent can go to get all the information that they need to find out how they fill out the application and what process is used.
And that, that information is right here in this next, the policy 5.23, is what you just went over.
Yep. So that's in the new policy. So are there any other questions about 5.20? I'll make that change on Controlled Open Enrollment. And then the next one is a new policy, 5.23, entitled Controlled Open Enrollment. This was discussed by the Policy Enforcement Committee in September. And this is basically right out of the bill. This includes the development of the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan and what is included in the plan, which I just went over.
Superintendent, you were saying that DOE's indication right now is that they're not trying to challenge districts on their choices. They're accepting, basically, the local control of that, which I'm sure they don't want to get in, in that business of doing that. But that makes me, encourages me that, that we should be able to adopt our own plan. My fear is, and I think we still have to watch this, that legislators don't try and change the legislation to now take away more local control. Because that's my fear with it. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. But that is something, as, as the legislation session, as the legislative session continues to start, you know, I think they've already started to put us on notice. This could be at least palatable if we're allowed local control, as, you know, I think Mr. Dixon and his counterparts around the state are trying to do so that local districts maintain that control. My fear is that they're not going to like always our decisions, and they're going to start making decisions at a state level. We already complained about the federal government's overreaching. We need to make sure that we continue to, the state's overreaching is getting out of control, too.
What I got out of my conversations with my counterparts is that we're in a lot better shape than most of them. I mean, we have a much more manageable size and less, you know, moving around than they have in a lot of the districts.
And that's why we've been able to accommodate, to a large extent, what we have. So I'll take Citrus County's situation and...
Any questions about 5.23? And last is a related new policy. This is a policy on classroom transfer that allows parents to request a transfer. This was discussed by, by the committee on September 15th, and it's a new policy.
Have we had any requests for this, Mr. Mullen? You know, really, is this, you know, I don't know if parents are fully understanding that that's...
School, school?
Yeah, or, or for, yeah, from, well, I was thinking of classroom. I mean, other than we normally have, sometimes we have it regardless of whether we have a policy or not.
We always have teachers where we have requests, we have classroom requests. Obviously, this is not an impact on this because we always have processes to do.
That's what I thought. But nothing that necessarily pertaining to this policy where somebody's saying...
And it still comes down to, if you don't have space, you have to put, you have to make class size. If you don't have space, you can't do it. But we've never, it's never a good idea to leave a student in a classroom if the parent, or if the teacher doesn't want to teach in a classroom. So always, as a district, we've always tried to probably do this. That if we have one person teaching advanced chemistry, once a child advanced chemistry, there's no other option.
Right. And, and that brings up the point. I must, my, my experience with my own children has been that not necessarily just because somebody's teaching out of field, they may be, you know, highly qualified in teaching that particular course. Just the fact that they don't have necessarily that credential doesn't disqualify...
It's been a lot of technical reasons why they're out of field. They could have a chemistry, if they teach chemistry, you know, if they're very qualified. But it's considered out of field because they haven't passed something, and there's some certain conditions. So perhaps, just because they're out of field, doesn't mean they're not qualified to teach a particular course. It's because they're out of field.
Includes our policy review for today.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
This is a stage I do because the chairman is always on the politics committee, so if you sit and come up again, you...
Have a little discussion on board.
How do you think the study of this is going to be today?
As soon as the district, or the capital outlay.
Well, I should, I should...
Well, this one on the capital outlay, I believe is going to be relatively brief. Just wanted to share some information with the, with the board for your consideration and review for an upcoming workshop. So I know my part's going to be, I feel my part's going to be very rigorous.
I heard from Amy Crowell about Alice, and things like that.
Can we maybe take a break between C and D?
Yes.
Oh, it's after you, after you, sorry, John.
Well, good morning. I am here before the board today, as I shared. I want to share some information regarding the capital budget. I believe we, as a district, are embarking on a journey of reviewing our capital budget. And we know that there are many conversations that lie ahead of the board and a lot of tough decisions that lie ahead of the board as well. In an effort to assist the board in having some well-informed conversations and discussions in the coming months, we have worked to develop a resource for the board to use to better, have a better understanding of each line item within our capital budget. The purpose of today is to share with the board, let's recap with the board, our revenue sources for capital dollars, as well as to recap with the board the process by which we use capital funds to transfer capital funds into the general fund, to reimburse the general fund for some capital expenditures. I felt that was important. Then after, after we get through that process, which, once again, I believe will be relatively brief, I want to pass out to the board a copy of the capital budget with detailed information on each line item for your review. I want to orient you to the spreadsheet. Then my thought would be that over the, you know, coming weeks, you guys would have some time to review the document we shared with you today. And then we will come back before the board at an upcoming workshop to go through each department outlined in the budget. Does that, does that sound like a good plan?
Yes. And for Mr. Bishop to start, too. And the plan today is to get you to go through the capital budget. Because there's many items in there that you may see $100,000 spending, and you might, and you'll need to know what's within that, that particular budget at one item. As we go through, and, you know, we're not going to fix the capital budget today or the next meeting, it's going to take us several months, different workshops to go through this. Always keep in mind when you're reviewing the capital budget, what the priorities are. We need to discuss in some of the workshops where we want our fund balance to be at the end of five years. You know, previously, we had it at $40,000. Mr. Bishop referenced some of the projects that we've already taken out. That has moved our fund balance to about $5 million. And we all know that's a, where the board wants to be or not. So those are the discussions that we'll have in future workshops. So probably at every workshop that we schedule, between now and the end of this next school year, there'll probably be an item in there for capital budget discussion where we can put that in. We know that everybody has priorities. We know that people believe in, are very passionate about certain items. We just want to be able to have open communication between us and you all, who all do this through direction, on where we need to be when we get to the end of school year for capital budgets. All right, so this will be a long conversation for many, many months, Mr. Kennedy.
And Superintendent, I know, unfortunately, we've become all too accustomed to when we start this budget process early. I know I see Mr. Blocker in the audience, and he would start about this time as we felt like we hadn't finished one budget before we're already starting on the other. And that's why we've had to cut so much in the past. So I know, I appreciate this board has, and Superintendent has laid out priorities as we can. And then we, we pass a budget, and then sometimes Mr. Pelisante's told, or Miss, Miss Farmer, "Okay, well, we're going to need you to do more with less, and we're going to need you to extend the life of this even more." And I know that's probably going to continue to be this, this process. So I would just say we also need to continue to do what we've done in the past. Trust our staff as we ask them questions and when they say, because they're usually the ones putting their hands on, on the actual items and capital costs, as well as our teachers and our educators to say, "These are our priorities, and these are what we need." And I think as we continue to do that, we're going to be, we're going to be doing what's right for children.
I know that our board members know that our staff works very hard. And I know that Mr. Bishop and his team and all his departments have probably met nearly every day. And I know he was up there last night about 9:00 because he had to get this thing perfect to present to you all today. And I know there's rumors on the street, and I heard the other night from a forum, that a particular person made a comment, "Well, you all don't need to be hiring out as much. Your maintenance team can do more." Well, he knows what I do. I think, what do we have, one air-conditioning person or...
Yeah, we have limited staff.
Yes, and we've got one guy that goes up on the group. "Well, you know, if we eliminate hiring out, then we hire more staff." So I think sometimes it's just because they're unimportant sometimes. And I don't know that our public really understands the magnitude or the, how many projects our maintenance team puts out every single year. So you all know that. We'll try to do a better job to make it more public. And like I said, today's goal is just to give you the budget, let you review it, and then we'll start our process.
So at this time, I've asked for Ms. Wilson to join us this morning to, once again, recap the revenue sources, as well as re, review the capital fund transfer to the general fund.
Good morning. All right, so for our capital budget...
Did she have something to say to the president?
No, I don't.
No?
Okay, okay. He's talking expenses, I'm talking money, and so...
Hey, you just keep talking.
Leave him out of the front, right?
And I think this will enable the public to understand us, have come up to us and said, "Well, aren't you going to go ahead and do this? Aren't you going to do this at the value we have sent?" And, and the answer back is, "We're not going to have the money to do that." And so please understand that we'll do it when we get money, and however, you know, whatever that happens, however that happens, we can do it now. We apologize, but really, our heart was there, our finance is there.
At this point in time, at this point in time, we have basically four revenue sources for the capital fund. We have our main one, which is our biggest one, which is our local capital improvement taxes. That's our 1.5 millage levy that we are allowed to levy. And this, these monies are used for construction, renovation, remodeling, maintenance, and repair of our plants. We can also use it for school buses, to lease purchase equipment. We can use it for enterprise software. And we can use up to $100 for unwed FTE to compensate for our property casualty premiums. In 2016-17, we are budgeting $13,66,585,000 in capital outlay taxes. That's based on our school taxable value of $9,74,017,367. Okay, these funds are the ones we have to advertise every year. These are the ones that have to go through TRIM. We have to, you know, say, prove this, prove that, and send them all this stuff. So these are the ones we do advertise, what we're using these funds for. That goes out every year before we approve the tentative budget in July. We also have PICO funds, which are the Public Education Capital Outlay Funds. These are based on the state selling bonds. And every district's allocated certain amounts based on different things, different, their weighted FTE. At this time, we're receiving $512,995. This is for maintenance. We do not receive any new construction as we do not have our enrollment increasing enough to, you know, warrant new construction dollars. These dollars are decreasing to us, because they are increasing the amount they're giving out to the charter schools at this time. That's a recent legislative, you know, thing they did. We also have our capital outlay and debt service bonds. These are based on bonds from 1997 that the state sold. These are revenue bonds, and we participated in those many, many years ago. We are still receiving premiums and interest from that. And at this time, we receive about $146,632 a year for the capital outlay and debt service. And they're constantly refund, last in 1450, they refunded these bonds. So we're getting a little bit more, about $10,000 more than we used to. But the state manages these, and they're, they're constantly refunding and, and, you know, trying to help us get some more money. Our last source would be impact fees. Of course, we are not letting impact fees as new people come into the county to build and stuff, but we do have some impact fees that are still sitting out at the county that we can use. These do have to be for capacity-increasing projects. So those are...
One, one second. On the PICO monies, I understand we have the maintenance. The state's requirement for new construction PICO monies, is that, if I recall, not money that has to be spent in that year or for a defined project? So when we say we're not even needing that, I thought we had to demonstrate to the state, for example, a specific need that that's going to, so...
Yes, yeah, a project priority list.
That's what I was going to say. So until we've identified and met that criteria...
And the capital outlay and debt service can only be used for project priorities also. And in the past two years, one year, I think we crossed over from IPS Kitchen to IMS Kitchen, and those have been the ones in the last... IMS Kitchen, and those have been the ones in the last few years that we've used. So, are there any more questions on the revenue that comes into the capital fund? So, Mr. Bishop also wanted me to go over a little bit of the capital transfer, which is always, everybody's trying to understand that, and these are expenditures that the general fund bears, but the capital fund can transfer money over to the general fund to help offset those expenses, and they're expenses that we can't pay for with capital funds, but we can use those funds to bring money into the general fund. And this is where, as we look at our five-year plan, this is where we probably made some of our biggest cuts, is in the transfer, so just remember and be cognizant that this is going to impact our general fund, if we cut these certain items, we will be receiving less money into the general fund, so our revenue stream in the general fund will decrease. So there's several items that we can use the capital funds for, for general fund expenses, a big one is salaries, and I'll go over those in a minute, and then we also have the insurance, which I just spoke about, we can transfer up to a hundred dollars per unweighted FTE into the general fund to cover our property casualty insurance. We also can transfer money for enterprise software, our enterprise software would be our Skyward, it would be our maintenance work order systems, Maryland's routing software, anything that is used to make the district run. We cannot use it for educational software, which is most of the things that Dr. Gaddis has to buy, but we can use it for most of the things Mr. Chamberlain has to buy, so it's the software that's needed to make the district run, the reporting software, finance software, student software. So those are things we usually have to pay for with general fund money, but we can use capital funds to bring revenue into the general fund. We also can use, we pay for our debt service, which is our bonds, we pay for those out of our debt service fund, but we can, we transfer money from the capital fund into the debt service fund, so we can make those payments. We also can use it for maintenance projects, and I'll go over those a little bit in just a minute. So, I want to talk about the salaries first, that we can use the general fund, or the capital funds for.
Can I ask a question for you? So basically, we've got around fourteen million dollars in revenue, or a little less than fourteen million dollars in revenue coming in, is that kind of the figures for next year?
For the capital fund, yes.
Capital fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a three million dollar bond payment at Crystal River.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got about eleven million dollars...
Coming in.
Coming in.
Yes.
And we have a, what is our reserve right now, twenty-one, twenty-one...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two million dollar reserve.
Yes.
And so as we look over this capital budget going down, when you talk about guidelines that the board is going to set, you want to know what are, what we expect to have left in reserves in five years, I mean, obviously, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars doesn't cut it, I mean, that's, we're getting very, in a very dangerous area. So as we think through this, you know, we've got to look at what our expenses are versus what our revenue is, and what's not covered under the revenue comes out of our reserves, and that's where we start getting into the danger area here, when we cut, keep cutting those reserves, so we have a big event, something happened with a school that's damaged, or a storm, or whatever comes by, comes through to us, we have to be ready to respond to that, or in the case of the Duke Energy issue, not paying their taxes, we may rescue the district because of our reserves, overall reserves, not...
Right, the salaries that we can use are, we have planning and growth, COE compliance, facilities and construction, and maintenance salaries. Planning and growth, COE compliance, and facilities and construction, we can transfer from the capital fund up to ninety-five percent of what those costs are to the general fund, and that ninety-five percent is a number we came up with with the auditors, it's based on the square footage of, ninety-five percent of the square footage of the entire district is schools, and about five percent is district offices. So anything that can be attributed straight to schools themselves is a hundred percent transferable, we only have ninety-five percent of our square footage of schools, so they've been willing, and they've accepted that method of transfer from us for the last, since I've been here over ten years, that's been our percentage of those salaries. And when we get to maintenance, everybody originally is budgeted at Maintenance Cost Center, 9081, which is their cost center, but through SchoolDude, they work very diligently to track out how much time those maintenance people spend at the schools. So each quarter, we transfer salaries from the maintenance center out to the cost centers, that way we can transfer a hundred percent of those salaries that were charged to the cost centers versus just a blanket ninety-five percent, so we are able to recoup probably a couple hundred thousand extra that way by the SchoolDude work order system that maintenance uses.
So Mr. Pelisante gets an order to repair a door at Citrus Springs Elementary, somewhere along the line, that will get charged back to Citrus Springs Elementary as a capital expense, and thereby a hundred percent of that cost gets captured out of capital, as opposed for it to have to go to general.
Yes, instead of it being ninety-five percent...
But just the salary and labor part of it.
Salary and labor, and also the project side of that, which I haven't got for that.
Okay, so that will, but at this point, the salary side of it?
The salary side of it, yes.
As opposed to what would have been ninety-five percent, had we just done it as a straight?
Just left it there, yes.
So the cost tracking, or the tracking, not only is it providing us the data that we need to be able to manage the staff and logistics, it's also what we've used in the audits to be able to capture a hundred percent.
Yes, yes. Now, remember, we cannot, we cannot cover custodian salaries, these are strictly maintenance workers, sports field maintenance is not included, pest management is not included, and lawn maintenance is not included, we do not, we hire out our lawn maintenance, but whether we employ those people, or we hire out separate companies, none of those projects can be covered on capital. So, you know, we have to maintain our lawns, we want to keep the bugs out of schools, you know, we want to keep our schools clean with, by the use of the custodians, we cannot use the capital funds for those things.
And Ms. Wilson, just so in case the board, just to remind the board, and since Mr. Pastone's in the audience too, I believe because of our cost tracking, we're able to take, for example, custodians during student contact time with this cafeteria, and charge that to Mr. Pastone, who actually is able to run his operation like a private business, where it generates an excess revenue, I always forget how we have to refer to it, but, and charge against that, which doesn't come out of...
The general.
The general fund, and obviously wouldn't have it attached to the capital fund, and I believe it's not just custodians, but also our aides that you're paying for during that time, or is that correct, or just the custodians?
Custodians.
Okay, sorry, in case any auditors were listening, just the custodians.
And that, and just for your reference, that is almost six hundred thousand dollars this year.
How much?
Almost six hundred thousand that Mr. Pastone's covering, that the general fund would have to bear if he didn't run the program that he runs, so...
That's a lot.
It's grown, it's grown over the years, so...
I need some question about federally, it's discussed by some group, but about time and half for people who were soured, does that, that all comes into our purview?
There has been changes in the overtime laws, we can present that to you at some time if you want to. There have been some changes, it has impacted some people that previously were not in that overtime classification and are now under the new guidelines.
Because I was thinking, if you had to, you know, power or we know what, quite a bit of an impact.
Definitely would be, there are very fewer people now that qualify for exemptions than what was previously in that category.
Maybe if in the future you could add that to the presentation, so we could see...
We'll make sure it's on a major workshop in a little before December, because the new regulations will impact December 1st, so we'll make sure to be charged this for the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so the last thing I just wanted to cover was, what projects do we pay for out of general, and what do we pay for out of capital? And these are the maintenance department projects, and I think that is where the confusion gets in a little bit, is not, maintenance doesn't just do maintenance, sometimes they're taking care of replacing an AC, or doing some stuff that facilities maybe can't handle at the time they are doing, so it might not be something that is actually maintenance of the building, but it's more a capital project. So, I like to think of it as repair versus replace, so if we're repairing the hole in the carpet, we're going to use general fund, if we're going to replace this whole room, we're going to use capital funds. So, the replacement of the rug, we can take capital funds and move them into general. So there's this whole, you know, this is, every month, I have someone who goes and runs all these reports, and they go in, and we transfer money from capital, the auditors look at these, they've, over the years, said, "No, you can't do this, yes, you can do that," we work very diligently with them to transfer as much money out of the capital fund as we can to cover expenses in the general fund. So, I just wanted to kind of go over that with you, and realize that when we are cutting maintenance projects, maintenance salary, we are hitting the general fund, because that's less money we will be able to bring into the general fund.
That would have been very important to have said. Everyone would have looked at it like, "Well, this is..."
And that's what we kept trying to say, that it really directly did impact the classroom dollars because of exactly what your departments are doing to be able to capture those monies and maximize that amount of money into the classroom.
Do we have any more questions on the capital transfer, the revenue that comes into the capital fund?
You know, the only thing is that I think we've all probably get this question, and it's not a today, but maybe if we could sneak it in somewhere in a workshop or a presentation, is just some overview that we can share with the public of lottery funds, and how they come in, there's a very huge misunderstanding, that the assumption is that, "Well, you're getting all this money from the lottery," and I think, I think the board understands much of this, although it's a good time to review, but I think we need to be able to share that out and get that back out to the public.
Ms. Wilson, bring that up at the next board meeting, she's got that.
Next workshop.
She bring, well, she does a budget update, she...
That's fine.
Because she's got a short form...
Is the rest of the board, I mean, I agree.
And you know, I like seeing the vision of that, when you're talking, I'm visualizing a dollar bill coming out of the pocket of the public, and then where it goes in terms of the schools, and I'd like to see some sort of pictorial thing that shows what that dollar actually pays for, because people do not know, they don't know the full gamut of all of what you're talking about, and it's hard to understand, like, gosh, it's pretty good, but if you did a pictorial, but you want to do the pie chart of where money's spent, I think it'd be much more understandable.
Well, you know, at the lottery, they'll say, "Citrus County got four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars," well, we didn't, it's wonderful, our students got, you know, some scholarship monies, and there was some money that went into the reward system for the schools, but it didn't go into classrooms, it didn't go into assets, and it really doesn't directly come into ours, it's kind of a pass-through.
It's a restricted fund, yeah.
So...
I have a question on the, on the impact fee balance right now, and I know I brought this up before, but that that's the eighth watched, time-wise, on this, on this spending time constraints on that, and so how much is in there right now?
I would have to contact the county and find out from them, I don't know. Roughly, no, Mr. Dixon said.
Do you, I think Mr. Dodd too, is maybe asking is, do we know if there's any that's getting ready to expire, is there anything, because I didn't think we did, but I, we get, I think you kind of hear the same thing, "Well, that money, you're not going to even have time to spend it, you're going to have to give it back."
You think so?
I think it's ten years.
And we do look at every project and, you know, bill them and try to recoup from them what we can.
If it's impact fee fundable, I know you...
Yes, Mr. Dixon stays right on top of that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, ma'am, just once again, I'm going to be passing out to you a spreadsheet for your review. My thought would be that you review this for some workshop, it's going to go over to the audience. And simply this morning, I just wanted to orient you to the layout of the, or the format of the spreadsheet itself. Each of the lines that are colored, the oranges color, those are the lines where a new department begins. Each of the departments that have their hand in the capital budget cookie jar are represented here, you'll see on the far left-hand side of the spreadsheet, we have a description of each line item, that is in the budget book that you guys received back when the budget was approved. In the next cells to the right of each description is a, more of a detailed description outlining exactly what each software program does, for example, the very first one under Information Services API, Empower Business Automation, that's a paperless workflow system that allows for us to have digital signatures, who are, that would make us more efficient, however, I've done that for each of the, each of the departments, as you can see as you go through. A lot of the information that Ms. Wilson shared with you, as far as what gets costed to the capital budget in terms of salaries, in our facilities department, in our maintenance department, once you get to those respective departments, you will see those are outlined there as well. There's also a section in here that captures the bond payment that we have outstanding with the Crystal River High School project, and there's also a category in here as other miscellaneous, you'll see various things in there, I believe that's actually where the salaries are located, is under other miscellaneous. We feel that this is a very comprehensive document for your review, I would, once again, I would strongly encourage you to take some time to review that, as we will be coming back to the board with all our departments here represented, to go over each of the line items within their respective departments. We know you guys have a very full agenda today, with the state of the district coming out of debt services, you know, when we do bring this forward to go line by line with the board members, we want to make sure that we have ample time to be able to go through these line items.
Mr. Bishop, as I'm looking at, this is incredible, excellent, and I could just see Pat Doach doing his clips right down the aisle saying, "Yes, it is a beautiful document, I know it took a lot of time to learn."
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bishop, on Information Services, and I'm using this as an example...
Yes, sir.
Some of these things, do we have contracts though, that it's not, my question would be, is okay, if for some reason we said we no longer wanted X, are any of those contracted out that we're obligated to, and I guess maybe that would be...
Like if it was real or what happened?
Yeah.
Let me defer this, Mr. Chamberlain, can you answer that question?
Yes, all of the existing software started to lace up to the transition, and fixed costs remain, so we will discontinue those costs from the asset.
But if we did that, I mean, is...
Something else to replace it.
So in other words, okay?
Yes. We've already experienced the big cost of software.
Got it.
This buys us, and the upgrades, changes, and those kind of things, they come along with it.
So, so I think what you're saying though too, is if we, with these, if we didn't have it, we'd have to replace it with something, as, in that, you'd have to, so, got it, thank you, that was exactly what I was looking for.
So in reference to these years that are gray, that you haven't really...
Under one department.
Let's go, well, first of all, first of all, let's go to other miscellaneous capital budget expenses, that's on page three, so you have the two million in maintenance department salaries for one year, but then if you don't have anything for the next four years...
If you look down at the very bottom, let me see here, not under miscellaneous, I do not, now, what I've spoken with Ms. Wilson about is reducing the capital budget by a hundred thousand dollars in the out years per year, but no, we don't have that projected out over time. To be quite honest, we do that, are we...
But we're still going to, we're still going to bill the maintenance department salaries?
Absolutely, yes, sir. We're still, we'll still bill the same, to be quite honest, you know, we have to look at steps, that would be so labor intensive that we just didn't have time from the last time before the board to today to run that. That'd be pretty intense.
So the totals obviously are off because we didn't figure out what the, what the amounts were going to be.
What totals are speaking of?
Then at the bottom, the total.
We get, they're absent, they're absent of that carried out throughout the five years, yes, sir.
And then if, as we go down to the maintenance now, you didn't project anything for '17, '18, because those are still being defined?
That is still being defined through the work that, that our staff does when they go out and they do the assessments of the facilities this year. That's what will drive the budget for next year.
This is what's in the five-year plan right now.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So if it's not, if it's not carried out in those other gray areas, then it's not in the plan.
That is correct.
But if, if you look at page six, there is, it does have a total.
Yeah, I see there.
So there is some money, it does have a total one of those years.
Right, and that's what replaces the under dollar deduction.
And like, and in seven, I can see where it starts, you know, then '18, '19, there's expenses, and page eight, there's, you know, there's different ones that go out, and that's part of the capital.
That's a five-year plan through the facilities department, that's the projects that the, between the maintenance department and the facility department have identified as needs.
And I think that Mr. Dodd's correct as far as, on page three, what we're looking at there is now the upcoming budget. The big question, of course, becomes in the subsequent years, what do we do? And that's, I'm assuming what this board is going to have to have some conversation about is, okay, what we do in that year, will we continue to apply it? Will we look at, you know, a change in the way we've operated, or what will we be doing? But I think if I recall in previous conversations, what you were saying is roughly about right now, and this has been, I think, what we talked about during the half, the half penny, about $2 million a year is running through the maintenance departments for salaries in those particular areas that you've broken out there, purchasing agent, and those things. So we either find a place to expense those or recapture that, or as Mr. Dodd said, we have to then plug those numbers back in.
That is correct, absolutely. So that is going to be dependent upon the board's decisions and board's philosophy as we go through this journey as I described earlier, you know.
But we don't know. At this point, we were just, we would be guessing.
Exactly right.
We could put $2 million in there and spread it out, and that would.
That'd be nothing more than, yes, again, okay.
Now, the 10% increase on page two, code compliance, you say, you know, assumes a 10% increase in cost for services. You know, obviously, I guess that wasn't just pull out a hat, although, you know, I would say let's, you know, go with 4% or 5%, but obviously, you came up with 10% based on like?
And we certainly can go with any percentage that we, that we'd like to. I believe that I would have to defer to Ms. Surgeon on this because that's her area. But I would say that I would caution you to only go 4% is because that would cause us to under project the budget in the future. Much more than 10%.
Based on trend, we can have to.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to say we're going to put that in there and then increase the, increase the 10% every year if they know we have the money, but I guess that's part of.
But for budgeting, you have to look at, you have to look at trend, form decisions.
I mean, I just, I didn't really see that in other areas though, as far as, I mean, we can pretty much say that for Information Services too, but I mean, are we?
As far as the, the service premiums?
As far as the projected increase in cost.
A lot of ours are services and repairs. So maybe 4% services, but repairs, we don't want those stuff so much.
We got you. And also, some of those costs in Information Services, as Mr. Chamberlain said, are fixed costs, and we know where those are going to be if we stay with that particular thing.
Right, right. Mr. Bishop, this, I have, it's, it's kind of a more global conversation for, to continue, to see if the board even maybe wants to continue or how to explore. In transportation, we've talked about, you know, buses, and I think you talked about generally trying to look at maybe spreading bus purchases over a more even period of time as opposed to sometimes we need to 10 one year, but 2 the next year, and then try to average that so we have that cost a little more fixed and a little more planned. In addition to that, we've talked about the cost in the past of rehabbing a bus would cost X amount less, but we can't use capital dollars to do it, it has to come out of the general fund.
That's right.
And I think, and actually, Mr. Blocker was here, is here. One time, I remember you saying, but we could actually purchase a rehabbed bus from another district and expense that through capital. We can't do it ourselves. And so aside from there being a ridiculous legislation that issued there, my question is, is do we explore having an arrangement with a sister county or some, or some other county where we rehab buses and our buses and sell them to them, and they rehab theirs and we sell them to us, and we use those cost centers? Because if we did that, and I'm, and by the way, this is all, you know, very Pollyanna, that would be all great if we could find a place that does that. But I am thinking, I think a rehab bus, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is about 300 or so thousand or less to rehab a complete bus. Or so. And then you're talking about a, I'm, I'm sorry, about 30,000 maybe? I'm sorry, it's 30,000, I'm adding a zero. And it's like 110,000 for a new bus. And I'm not a huge math person, but I know that's a lot less. So it's, to me at least, worth, you know, exploring that and saying, listen, since we've lost this situation, I don't really want to go into Ms. Farmer being in the bus general, you know, fixing business, but I think in this case, we're almost trading buses, and if we, if the district and the taxpayers win at the end of the day, I'm certainly exploring that if the board is interested in that as well.
Would you define rehab, what's involved in rehabbing?
Refurbishing.
But how far, what is, I know, I understand that.
It's pretty extensive.
How extensive can it be?
However extensive you want it to be, but it's going to be dependent on the bus that you start.
Right, depends on the condition of the bus and what actually needs to be repaired.
It could be everything down to the new, new covers on the seats could be included in that refurbishment.
It's not going to be going down tires, that's the thing.
Pardon me?
It's not going to be going down tires, but they do have.
Well, we have to.
New tires.
Well, no, you always put new tires on the wheel.
Or plugging or any of that, it's new tire, right?
Talking about engine overhauls and that kind of.
That's what I was talking about, new transmissions, new mechanical parts of those kinds of.
Right, but also remember that every year that you purchase a new bus, it has new safety specifications that it must meet.
Absolutely.
So those older buses refurbished are not going to meet the safety standards that newer buses need, so just something to kind of keep in mind. As you're just refurbishing older and older buses, you're not coming up to the new standards.
And I'm totally in agreement with that, and that's, that's why I say it's, it's to me maybe worth an exploration of saying, particularly, I know with some of the bus fleet, and Ms. Farmer, you do an amazing job managing that. By the way, I've been on a couple of buses the last few weeks because of field trips and sporting, sporting events, and usually, some of the field trips, you get a little older bus, and they've been in excellent maintenance, you know, air conditioning, that was the most important, was running and cold. That's a big thing that we worry about. But I know, that's why I say, some, you know, I know there's kind of certain buses used for certain, you know, kind of routes. Some are routes, some are like buses that are more defined for field trips. I'll tell you, Hernando County, when they're coming up to us, they're often asking us, they need us to delay sporting activities because they have to wait till all their buses have gotten back to the school before they can then get a bus and assign to go back to the school to now do a field trip, because they don't have enough buses to make it all work. And I know, it's not like we're, we have buses galore, but you've got to try to prioritize buses and use them, and if they're an older fleet, then you use them for different purposes than a newer fleet.
Typically, the newer buses go on the route, and then the older buses, which we have been fortunate to not have as old buses as some of the other districts have. So currently, we have 2000s and newer, and our 2000s are on our serving routes right now. So anything that we send on the field trip is going to be those lower 2000s. But we've been trying very diligently to stay on top of the air conditioners and those kinds of comfort things that we're not required to have, but we know that it's important to have. But you'll see most of those older buses will go on field trips, and, and not that they're any more or less reliable, because you can have one come in new that has issues as well. So it is, it is keeping up your routine maintenance and those types of things. But you do miss out on some of those safety features because they're on the newer buses, because every year, the state improve, improves the specifications, approves new specifications to improve the safety of the bus. But you're right, some of the, some of the older buses used to not have seatbelts, they would be on field trips, but now, everything from 2001 on has seatbelts, and you think a little bit of that does not.
Yeah. And the county has a school that's asked for this morning, and one, one child was on the bus and was on the road.
Thank you.
So just once again, please take some time to review that document. We'll come before the board in a workshop with each department, go over their budget, and answer any questions you may have. In the interim, as you go through your review process, if you have any questions about the, about the document, feel free to give me a call, and I'll, we'll have opportunities to sit down and try to chat with you. Thank you very much, y'all, for today.
Oh, thank you.
And the county was one of the sponsors.
And great job, Mr. Bishop, thank you.
Okay, you're ready for a report?
Yeah.
It's been about 10 minutes.
State of the district.